You know. Thank you for that. Yes, recording. A number of people asked me for the recording, so thank you for that. I just want to say I know that your time is really, really valuable and I don't take it lightly at all that you're joining us. Maybe some of you as you're also whipping up some dinner or folding some clothes, or maybe even you got your kids in the bath and you have a minute or two while you watch them splash around. I have two little ones, one and a half and three and a half. And since having them, it's made me just really more deeply appreciate the time that people put into this sort of learning. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We are in webinar mode, so probably many of you have been in situations like this before. But just so you know, that means that the only people who are going to be able to speak for the next hour are the panelists. But that does not mean that we don't want to hear from you. We totally want to hear from you. Please put your questions in the chat, put your comments in the chat. We will be monitoring it. But we have everybody muted so that it cuts down on background noise. So yeah, I'm the Director of Campaign Educating at Education Campaigning, rather, at Parents Together. Like I said, I live in Chicago with my partner and my two kids. I'm very much a product of public schools as a student and teacher's kid. My mom is a sixth grade English teacher, so I just like really lived at the middle school. If any of you are like teachers' kids, like six AM to seven PM sometimes. And that's really one of the reasons I'm so passionate about this work that I get to do at Parents Together. Parents Together is a community of more than three million parents and other caregivers who want to learn together and take action to make the world a better place for families and kids. So if you know us primarily maybe through social media, you might know Nani's face or Robin's face, often sharing like thought provoking questions that you can ask your kids. They're sharing tips on how to navigate parenthood or scripts to navigate tricky conversations. And these videos reach tens of millions of parents. I know I find them super helpful. Maybe you do too. And then we also take action to make the world a better place for parents and for families. So taking action on issues of economic security, pressing companies and our government to do more to make being online safer for kids and pushing for a thriving education system. So I spend a lot of my time reaching other parents to talk about ways our public education system is currently under attack. From book bans, attacks on LGBTQ youth, censorship of conversations about race and racism, to schemes to privatize our education and drain our schools of funding. And I'm focused on harnessing our collective power to do something about it because I know that the vast majority of parents trust our teachers and want a robust public education system where our kids learn critical thinking skills. But a couple of really loud people on the other side are getting a lot of attention. So that's who I am. I'm just going to kick it really quickly to my colleague before we get to the bulk of this session. Because one way that Parents Together makes an impact is by working by parent spokespeople to make sure that parent voices are represented in the media. So my colleague Stephanie is here to talk a little bit about that and introduce Jay, who's going to be available at the end of the session. And then we'll turn it over to School Board School. So Stephanie, the mic is yours.
Thank you so much, Susan. Hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie Medina. I am based in Nashville, Tennessee. I think I saw someone mentioned in the chat that they are in Williamson County, so not far from where I am. And I, as Susan was saying, I work at Parents Together as our storytelling specialist and alongside our Director of Storytelling Natalie Smith, the both of us have been building out our Parents Together storytelling project. And this project was created specifically to support parents in learning how to share their unique stories in an effort to create better change for families across the country. So together, we work with parents to find authentic and organic ways to share their stories. Oftentimes, we will do that by connecting them with news reporters and media outlets and opinion leaders alongside other parents in the Parents Together community who share similar experiences and want to take action together. So a little bit of our work, some of our, some of our work that we have spearheaded have been along different just parent and family issues specifically around education, which is why we are trying to build out our parent advocates and storyteller network with our education campaign vertical. And we've also done some work, some really significant work in creating online safety practices for kids and holding big tech and lawmakers accountable for creating safe spaces online. So we are currently offering a storytelling training series in collaboration with the Trevor Project that is being led by the Director of Storytelling, Natalie Smith. This training will mentor and empower parents who are in support of LGBTQ plus youth and have a story to share about a positive experience with LGBTQ plus youth. So if you're interested in participating at all, I'll provide some information in the chat. And also we'll provide information about how you can learn more about our storytelling network and program. And I also want to introduce really quick our parent advocate and storyteller who is joining us today, Jay Marshall. Jay is a mother and she is also the co-founder of 1865 No Racism in Schools, which is a parental advocacy group in Las Vegas that was created in response to a, unfortunately, a school shooting threat that targeted nine African-American students at her local, at a local high school in her community, that one of which her son was one of those students. So because she's a huge advocate for school safety and school safety being a huge focus, she's worked to close the gaps in policy, laws and protocols to promote equity and support for children of diverse ethnicities, children who are developmentally disabled, students of the LGBT plus community, and just students of diverse socioeconomic backgrounds. So she'll speak more and she has a lot of knowledge and expertise to share around school boards. So that being said, I will pass it back to Susan so we can learn more about the, about school boards, so.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, after School Board School.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you all for joining us tonight for our session. I'm Maya Bird. I'm the Director of Program and Communications at School Board School. And at School Board School, we bring together people who think they may want to run for school board and education advocates such as yourself, so parents, teachers, concerned community members. And we give them the knowledge and network to build equitable school systems. We'll chat in a link to our website now. Our expert guests tonight are Elisa Hoffman and Leslie Rossmussen. Elisa was elected to the Cincinnati Public Schools Board in 2013. And while on the board, she chaired the Policy Committee and led the process to author one of the first equity policies in the country. In 2018, she opted not to run for reelection and launched School Board School. Dr. Leslie Rossmussen was elected to the Forest Hill School Board, which is a suburb of Cincinnati, Ohio in 2019. So she serves as the Chairperson of the Finance Committee and as the Board's Legislative Liaison. For her day job, Leslie is an Associate Professor of Communications at Xavier University. Now, our sessions are designed to be interactive, but we know you may not want to be or be able to be as able to interact. And we want to be really clear that it's okay to just listen. We know you'll get a lot out of it, no matter how you engage. We're also going to be chatting in a lot of links tonight. Don't worry about keeping track of them. We're going to give you a document that's in the chat. And it will have all of the links that we share and we also have the link to the handout for tonight. It'll prompt you to make a copy. You can do that and it'll be yours to keep. So now that we know a little bit more about our expert guests and what we want to do, let's talk about what we want to accomplish tonight. So we're going to get objectives, so everyone's on the same page. And these are the things we hope you will know, believe and do by the time we're done tonight. So participants will be able to distinguish between the role of a school board, which is governance, and the district administration's role, which is management. Participants will know what questions they will ask school board candidates to help determine who they should vote for. And participants will believe their school board members are representatives of the community and listen to and value their constituents' input before making decisions. So we're going to get you all involved. We want to see where we're starting with these objectives. So we'll put up another, we'll put up a poll and we'll ask you how strongly you agree with some of these statements. Spoilers, we're going to ask you the same thing at the end of the session, just to see how much we've learned. So be honest here. Nobody expects you to know it all. That's why you're here tonight, is to learn. Take about 30 seconds and answer the three questions in the poll. So you're going to have to scroll down to see all three. All right, it looks like we have a lot of people that may find some trickiness with distinguishing the role of the school board and the district administration. So we'll go over those. Now, a lot of people who want to figure out some questions to ask school board candidates. And most of us do strongly agree that they should listen to the community. So that's great. Thanks for answering that, guys. No matter where we live or how much you already know about our objectives. If you're here tonight, we know it's because you care deeply about education in your community. Okay, so we've always believed that School Board School, that school boards are critical levers to change. But everyone in the country has had kind of a firsthand lesson of how important school boards are in the past few years. And with that, I'm going to pass the floor to our expert guests. Elisa will start us off.
Thanks so much, Maya. All right, so we are so excited to be with you all tonight. Thank you so much for joining us to talk about school boards with you all. So the first thing we're going to cover is why. Why are we talking about this for the next 20 minutes or so? What a school board does and what your administration does. And so we really just want to ground everybody on why this is so important. So the first reason why this really matters is because as you are thinking about how to advocate for your kids or for kids in your community, you have to know who to go to. So we say all the time at School Board School that to be an effective advocate, you can't just know what you're advocating for. You have to know who to advocate to, right? Like you have to know who actually has the power to change the thing that you're passionate about or that you want to see changed. So that's one reason. Another reason why we think this is really important is because it's a school board election year in lots of places, including here in Ohio where Leslie and Maya and I are. And so, you know, so we know that if it's not a school board election year this year for you, it'll be one next year for you. And so we really know that you have to first know what a school board is responsible for. And then you can listen to candidates and see, huh, is there a platform actually about things that a school board member can do? So for example, we had a candidate here in Cincinnati a few years ago who their platform, they kept talking about how they were going to, they were going to really fix the customer service department. And as a parent, you might be like, yes, every time I call a customer service, it just rings forever. And so you're going to end up voting for this person. Well, you'll find out shortly that that's not actually in the control of a school board member. They are not involved in day-to-day operations. And so you're going to end up giving your vote to somebody who can't actually change the thing you care about. So the first two reasons why this really matters is because it makes you a better advocate and it makes you a more informed voter. Okay, another reason this is important is because in order for everybody, if everyone has to stay in their lane in order for you to have a well-functioning school district. So I've talked to so many superintendents who are so frustrated they can't get their work done when school board members step out of their lane and start doing things that are actually about the day-to-day operations and vice versa. And when they get out of their lane, it makes it hard to get work done for kids. And so it's super important that everyone knows their lane and stays in it. And the last thing I'll say is I'm sure you all have heard this before, right? People say all the time, we got to hold our elected officials accountable. Well, how are you all going to hold your elected school board members accountable if you don't actually know what the job is? And so once you know what the job is, it is on you to actually hold them accountable. So those are the reasons why we are glad you're here tonight and learning about this. So let's go ahead and dive in. All right, we're going to start with a real basic overview. At the most basic, your school board governs the district while your administration manages it. So easy way to think about that is your board determines the what, the big picture, and then your administration determines the how, the implementation, the day-to-day operations. But probably the most important sentence on this slide here is where it says, "The board and administration co-create the vision and priorities for the district." So once your board and your superintendent and the administration have decided on those, everything else we talk about tonight, policymaking, budget decisions, curriculum, all that goes back to aligning with this vision and priorities. So that's why that's so important. And then once they've decided on that vision and the priorities for the district, like it says here, your board's going to establish the policies and the fiscal practices that align with it. And your administration is going to allocate the resources and manage the day-to-day operations aligned with that. So let's dive in. We'll talk about the first thing that a school board is responsible for, and that is policymaking. So your board makes and revises policy and then your administration implements that policy. So again, big picture, your board's going to determine the what, and then your administration's going to go ahead and determine the how. So your board's going to, big picture, create these policies that are aligned with the vision and priorities. And then your administration has to decide on all the procedures that go along with implementing a policy. So we're going to explain that a little further by giving you one quick example. So every school district everywhere is going to have an attendance policy. It's going to be really high level. We say all the time, we should not be writing procedures into policy, right? It's going to be really high level. So this is one sentence out of the Cincinnati Public Schools attendance policy. "The purpose of the policy is to outline acceptable purposes for which a student may be excused from school, to allow for the appropriate recording of student attendance and the ability of the district to determine students who are truant." Super high level, right? But then your administration, if you just think of this one policy, think of all of the procedures that have to go along with that to implement this. So Annie, can we see the procedures? Thank you. So that's things like they have to communicate to you all, what do you do if your child is going to miss school? That's a procedure. They have to train their staff on how to mark kids absent. They have to report to the correct authorities if a student is truant. So all of the implementation stuff is on your administration. So that's what we mean by the difference between policy and practice or procedure. And again, this is really important because if you email your school board and you're really upset about some, something and that it's actually a procedure, they're going to be like, well, we can't do anything about that. And then they're going to forward your email to somebody else. And again, to be an effective advocate, you have to know not just what you want to get done, but who has the power to do that. So we know policymaking, it's such a key function of the school board that quite frankly, that's why school boards are under attack right now, right? When Susan started us off, that's what she was talking about, these attacks on school boards. So for example, when I was on the school board, we did an equity audit where we looked through every one of our policies to see where we might be inadvertently reinforcing inequities in our district and then systematically revised each of those policies. So policy really is a key lever for change and it can be used to build more equitable and inclusive school systems. Or it can be used to maintain the status quo, or as we're seeing in so many districts right now, it can be used to bring us back. So I want to bring Leslie into the conversation and get her input here. So Leslie, can you talk to us about any examples from your time on the school board where policy either helped build a more equitable and inclusive district or where you realized it was really restricting access or opportunity or inclusiveness?
Yeah, well, I'm in a very interesting situation because we are in a suburb that was targeted and attacked. And I also, I now have four colleagues on the board with me that have made statements like, I don't like equity. So, and publicly in the media have said, I don't like the idea of equity. And it has caused quite a bit of controversy. However, the rail guard that our safeguard that I have in place is to refer back to policies that we already have that require us to meet certain standards. And that word is also in our state standards as well, right? So it doesn't matter that, you know, my colleague may have a vendetta against equity because we have a policy in place that, that outlines that. And we are able to put that, put it into context for them to understand that, well, special education and those types of accommodations are also part of an equitable education and providing those opportunities. And so, so even though we are facing some of these really tough issues, even internally from board members, the administration and myself, as you know, an advocate for the, for the district, can fight back, if you will, but factually by following the policies that we have in place. And those are not something that can be changed overnight. You know, we have to have, we have to, there's a whole process for policymaking in a district that goes through committee. You have to read, it has to be presented to the public at two different, regular meetings as well before it ever becomes a policy. So even, even that process in and of itself provides some, you know, safeguards to ensure that we're just not creating policies willy-nilly that we are in fact being, you know, somewhat transparent in showing what, what it is we're doing and then, and then hopefully implementing good policy.
Yeah, that's so critical to make, to, I think, everybody on the call tonight is knowing, what are the policies in your district? Leslie's bringing up such a good point. It's so hard for the average person to know what are our policies, but those should all be on your website for your school districts. And so being able to refer to them and search, do we have an equity policy? Is really important to any district, but I think especially in moments like we are in right now where like Leslie's board, it's been taken over by these extremists and they can point back to where this is actually outlined in policy. Thank you for that, Leslie. Okay, let's talk about another area that the board is responsible for. It's another key function, and that's the budget. So the board oversees and approves your district's budget. But the administration, led by your district's treasurer, they're going to allocate the financial resources. So one of the main duties of a school board member, you've probably heard this phrase, is they are supposed to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. That does not mean they should be going line by line through a budget, right? Again, they're the what? They're the big picture. That's why I said on that previous slide, they all are aligned on what the priorities of the district are. So the budget that comes to them from the administration should be aligned with the priorities and the goals that were established. And so as we're thinking about building more equitable districts, the budget is a key lever here. So again, important note, Leslie talked about equity policies, like policies around equity in her district. When Maya introduced me, she said, you know, I helped co-author one of the first equity policies in the country. We'll chat in our link to that policy. It's also in your handout for tonight. But we really encourage you to figure out if your district has an equity policy because there's a big difference between budgeting equally and budgeting for equity. And so that is really important to know. Another really important thing to know about the budget is that all of this budgeting has to happen in public, right? So being a public board, they are doing their budgeting publicly and so they should be hearing from you and getting your input. You do not have to be an expert in public finances. I do not know who is, right? But what you do need to be an expert in is your district. What do you think your district's priorities should be? And figuring out is the budget aligned with those? So for example, we know that there is a student mental health crisis happening coming out of COVID. So you could go to one of your budget hearings and you could say, I'm really concerned about our students' mental health. Could you let me know how our district is allocating funding for things like counselors and mindfulness and other ways to help our, our students with mental health? That's a great way to get your voice heard in the budgeting process. So again, want to hear from Leslie. She's on the ground doing this work right now. So Leslie, since approving and monitoring the budget is such a big job of a, of a school board, can you talk to us about how districts like yours get input from the community and how people on this call could get their priorities heard?
Yeah, again, I'm in a very odd circumstance where I, I feel like we are currently lacking that connection and transparency with our community. Now, prior to that, we held public budget hearings and we still do now. But I don't think, I don't think that the general public really understands that they do have input and they should come to those budget hearings. They're maybe not where the fireworks happen at your typical monthly board meeting, but that, that's the space where we are really prioritizing the high, high dollar priorities, basically, and, and kind of determining what the vision is in terms of, you know, fiscal awareness. And we don't always have public comments at, at those hearings, though that's the unfortunate part. And I think that's going to vary district to district and certainly state to state based on what the laws require. But even showing up and understanding and learning what is happening is incredibly important. And then you can always advocate via email, you know, sending phone call or phone messages, coming down to have meetings, even with district officials as well. And I think people are just maybe not as informed about how, how to do that. And oftentimes, we're expressing frustration over other things and not necessarily the finances. But the finances is equally as important probably because that adds to the overall ability for us to function and, and you, you know, properly administer those tax dollars.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think it's both that people don't even know what is, when a budget hearing is happening or why I should show up. So even on our district, which is a really large district, we would sometimes only have a handful of comments. And you'd think, wait, there are, you know, tens of thousands of kids in this district. But I think the other part you just talked about is it's hard for the average person to know. Like it's intimidating to, to this big budget. And so I think you're right, like sending an email or leaving a voicemail. Those are also really great ways to have your voice heard on what, what should be in the budget. And then of course, if you can come to those meetings and express what you think the priorities should be. I like how you put, it's not often where the fireworks are, but it is so important.
And, and I would say too, just because a monthly meeting isn't necessarily a full-blown budget hearing, it's still a space where, at least in Ohio, we, well, actually, I think it's up to board discretion. You have to allow public comments. So, and that can be on any topic. And that can certainly be a place to voice your concerns and advocate for certain issues related to finance. And, you know, we can't ignore the public comment. We will hear you because we are sitting at that table. Some people do ignore the email, you know, and again, that varies. But coming to public comments during regular board meetings and, and speaking is one very powerful way to force boards to listen.
Yeah, I love that. Thank you. Okay, let's talk about another thing that the board is responsible for. And that's curriculum. So lots of people don't know or maybe didn't know before it started making headlines that school boards approve a curriculum, including textbooks. So again, in most districts, I know in Cincinnati Public, we assume our administrators are the experts, right? Like as school board members, we're basically volunteers. It's not our job to be experts in, you know, second grade science curriculum or, you know, high school social studies curriculums, right? And so it is our administration's job to be experts in that. And so again, your administration should be bringing to the board recommendations for curriculum that go back to what we said earlier, that are aligned with the vision and the priorities of the district and that are aligned with the values that are outlined in the equity policies and other policies of your district. So again, that's why it's important for you all to know, does my district have an equity policy? And then if they don't, that's a great thing to go to the mic and start advocating for. And again, we've got a link to that in, an example from our district in your handout for tonight. So I'll tell you, in my district in Cincinnati Public Schools, I have kids in the district. And last year in eighth grade, my daughter had a, a, a project for her language arts class where they had to pick a social justice book and write a report on it. And there was like 20 different books to choose from and it was things like John Lewis's March and Being Jazz and Mouse. And I was looking over this list and I was like, oh my God, these are like books that are literally being banned in other districts. And my daughter's being encouraged to read them and it made me really proud to be part of our district. And that my daughter was getting exposure to a lot of people's stories that she might otherwise not know. And so it's really important that you And so it's really important that you know what is the curriculum in my district and how is it aligned with the vision, with the priorities, with the values of our district? Again, not all of you who joined us tonight are in districts like that. Um, as Leslie's been describing, her district is struggling right now. Um, because there are board members who have been vocal that they don't want to allow discussions about equity, about identity, about inclusion. So Leslie, talk to us again. Um, tell us about some of the challenges of curriculum on a board where the board members are not all in alignment about the values for the district. And then if there are people on the call tonight who are in similar districts, what can you do?
Yeah, um, you know, I'm, our situation has been tense for the last two years. Prior to that, um, in terms of curriculum, it really wasn't that it wasn't challenging because we trusted our administrators, as you said. Um, and I, the challenge I find myself in or in have for the last two years is trying to explain to my current board colleagues that, um, you know, they're not experts. Um, one of them, you know, is in exercise fitness. That's, that's great. That's wonderful. But that does not mean you're an expert in cu- cu- curriculum design a- assessment. Um, I'm very involved in assessment at my university where I teach. Um, and yet that's, and I I can do that, sure, but I can't do that in the context of K through twelve. And I think really intelligent people know they don't know everything. Um, and you and you lean on your experts and you know, I feel like we've kind of fallen into this, this um trend where people say, oh, I I've done my own research. Well, did you get a lab and conduct the studies? No. Um, you searched on Google and and that is a real challenge that we are facing in in our suburban district right now where, you know, eh, there is that there's not alignment among the board. I trust my administrators. They have advanced degrees in in areas of curriculum, curriculum design that is appropriate for K through twelve education. And so right now, we are really, we're, we're doing the um, you have to approve the curriculums every certain amount of years, depending on your state. And we're coming up right now with one of them, and it's been a little bit of a challenge to make people understand, people on the board, that we are not experts in this stuff. They are. And what what is the way we learn? The way I learned in, you know, the eighties and nineties is not how kids learn today. We know that. Um, the state standards change as well, so i- it's very nuanced and it's much more complicated. And I find myself having to be an advocate for for that alone. Um, and and in an attempt to convince my board colleagues that, listen, we have to, we don't know how to do this. We need to trust the people that do know how to do this. Um, and o- one thing I will say, at least in Ohio, we have to put out the curriculum revisions and things like that for the community to come see. And that's another thing that I don't think people necessarily know they can do. So it's available either posted online or in the central office for the district. You, at least usually those, that seems to be the case. Um, and people can go and review the curriculum. You know, there's again, also the state standards that public school districts have to adhere to as well. So so all of those elements are at play and we have access to it. Um, and you know, it's, it's so challenging right now because of the the climate that we find ourselves in. There's a lot of nitpicking, you know, of certain elements and um, you know, conflation and things like that happening. Um, so you know, I I wish I was in CPS right now. Um, when it comes to to this, it seems, there seems to be much more support um than my my district right now. But yeah, it's challenging and I think ultimately it's, yeah, the board approves it, but we are, we have to lean on our experts. And when you have a board like mine, you spend a lot of time convincing them of your expertise, and that's unfortunate.
Yep. Yeah, but we, and we know that that's not unfortunately unique right now, right? That so many districts are facing that. And so I think that those are great suggestions, Leslie, around um, curriculum changes have to be made public. And that's a really important point that most people don't know. And so that's a great thing to stay on top of for everybody on this call. Um, and then, like Leslie said earlier, going to the mic. So expressing at the mic that what you want your curriculum to look like um is another really important way to have your voice heard. Um, okay, so we're going to um go over two more quick points here about other things that your board is responsible for. Okay, so it's really important, really important to understand that your school board only hires and evaluates um the superintendent and in many states, the treasurer, and potentially a couple other roles, maybe like general counsel or internal auditor, but that is it. Everybody else is recruited and hired and evaluated by your administration. That's so important because I know when I was a school board member, one of the things that people would come to me most often, right? If they were slid over next to me on the bleachers at a basketball, my kids' basketball games, or if they stopped me at Kroger. Most of the time, they had a concern about an individual teacher or an individual principal. And of course, it's my job to listen. I am their representative. And so I would always listen. But that's not in my control to do anything about. Um, and so what I would always do is I'd have to say like, thank you so much for letting me know. I'm going to email our superintendent and copy you with this concern, and the superintendent will take it from there. So again, as an advocate, it's really important for you to know that, so you know who to go to when you do have questions or concerns. And then finally, but probably most importantly, the board represents you. They represent the community and they report to you. So that means, as Leslie keeps reinforcing here, is that they should be hearing from you and hopefully listening to you, depending on who's on your board, um, as they're making their decisions. That's really important. So it's important for you to speak up and it's also important for you to keep coming back. So not just saying, coming once to a school board meeting and saying something, but coming back to the next meeting and saying the same thing. Bringing a friend with you to the next meeting and saying the same thing. That's how you get your voice heard. So that was a lot. We're going to do a really quick check for understanding to get you all involved, see how much you learned. So we're going to put a poll question up and we'll give you about thirty seconds to answer it. Um, and your choices are either if you think it's in the control of a school board, the control of administration, or if you're like, I don't know, you just said a whole lot in the last thirty minutes. I I I'm still processing. Totally fine to say you don't know. So our first question. Who determines an individual school's specific dress code? For example, should they wear uniforms or not? Again, remember, is that a what or a how? So your what is the board, your how is the administration? Oh, we're pretty split here. Okay. This one is actually your administration. Okay, so this is about implementation. So every school district is going to probably have a dress code policy, and it should be really high level. It should be really like high level what? And then each school can then implement it with a how. So for example, in in our district, some schools have uniforms, others don't. It's totally up to the school. So the implementation of that policy is administration. We're going to do another one. This one's really important, given everything that's happening around the country right now. Who decides if the consideration of controversial issues has a legitimate place in the instructional program of schools? Is that what? So think about, is that a what or is that how? Who decides if the consideration of controversial issues can be discussed in schools? Okay, good. It looks like for this one, we had a lot of people who got this one. This one is your school board. This is a what? What can be discussed in schools? So that's big picture. And then if you think about the how, right? Like, a school that's a K to twelve school is going to implement this differently than a middle school, right? Or understanding what your population is, you might have to implement different parts of a, a, of a controversial issue differently. So what, big picture, what can be discussed versus how? One thing to note here is I know in our district, we have a policy called controversial issues. Annie will chat it in now and it's in your guide. It's so important. So we really think one of your next steps should be to see if your district has a policy like that. Especially at times like now, being able to refer back to policy like Leslie said and say, wait a minute, why are we even debating this? We've got a policy about this is really important. Okay, we're going to do one more quick one. For this one, you have a concern about your child's teacher. You've spoken to the principal. Nothing's changed. Do you go to a school board member or someone in the administration? Okay, good. It looks like most people got this one. This one is your administration. So we really, really, one of the things we want you to remember in terms of being a really good advocate is your school board only manages the superintendent and the treasurer and maybe one other person, like a internal auditor or a general counsel. If you have a concern about a teacher, that's a school site concern, that is your superintendent. So even if they, I mean, they don't manage that teacher directly, they'll manage that teacher's boss and they'll be able to help with that concern. So those day-to-day operations and things happening like that in your school, that is on your administration. Okay, so now that you know a little bit more about what a school board does, it's also important to know when your school board meets. So we keep saying, go to your school board meetings, and you might be like, when does my school board actually meet? So we saw when you registered, um, that lots of you have been to a school board meeting, but there's actually a whole bunch of you who have never been to a school board meeting. So it's really exciting. You might be ending up going to your first one. So again, we talk a lot at School Board School about how we're not learning just to learn. We're learning because your communities have real problems, and so you're learning what actions can you take to help solve those problems. And one of them is go to your school board meetings. So we're going to chat in a link to um a school board meeting finder. And if you click on that link, it'll ask you to put in your information and it'll spit back out to you when your next school board meeting is. And again, that link is in the handout, so if you don't do it right now, um, you can do it later, but we're super excited for you to have that resource so that you know when your next school board meeting is and can start showing up. Okay, now that we know what a school board member does, you will know when your next meeting is. Again, it's a school board election year in lots of states. If it's not this year, it will be next. And so we want to apply what we've already learned. And think about, now that we know this, what a school board member does, what should we be asking candidates to be really informed voters? So Leslie, as a school board member yourself, talk to us about what you look for when you go to the polls.
Oh, what do I look for? I look for people that know they don't know everything. That is critical for me. And in my community, it's very clear which candidate thinks that and which doesn't. And I also personally look for people that are advocates for all students, even ones that might not fit into a certain box. Um, or conform to a norm, a social norm or something like that. Because I want people on my school board that are going to advocate for all kids, regardless of their religion, their race, their orientation, their identity, any of those things, because it doesn't matter. Our job is to provide an equitable education for every student. And when I hear candidates saying things like, um, well, teachers are just trying to indoctrinate. They, that tells me they've never been in a classroom and have no idea how little, they don't even have, teachers don't even have time to grade um, or plan, let alone sit little Johnny down and tell him he should be a girl. Um, or whatever the case may be, right? Um, but so those are some of the flags that I personally look for, people that understand that, you know, I've, I feel like I'm qualified and I'm all of this and these things. But I also know that we need to have a really solid team around us that are experts in these various areas so that we can work together, that collaborative and and growth mindset needs to be there. And then on the social side, I'm looking for candidates that that are not, you know, making things up or not trying to attack certain groups of students because they're different. I mean, it's that simple. And unfortunately, that seems to be the platform, and it's pretty consistent platform, I would say, across the US right now for a certain segment of candidates. Um, and we do make policy, and I don't want somebody sitting in that seat that's going to make a policy that's going to hurt my child um, because they might be different or perceived as different. Um, so those are, those are probably the two number one things that I'm looking for when I hit the polls.
Those are so important. Yeah, and I'd say like, I know some people were chatting and questions about the state level. So I would just add to what Leslie is saying here that, um, yeah, that like, eh, even if you're a local school board member, I always ask questions about what they know about what's happening at the state. Because what's happening at the state impacts you, what you can do at the local level. And so I think that one's really, a really important one. Um, and then I think this is similar to what Leslie was saying. I always want to cut, figure out how kind of like, how well do they play in the sandbox, right? Right? Like, it's great if you know what you want to get done, but can you compromise in order to move things forward? Can you listen to other people? And so really figuring those things out as well. Um, so Leslie, I'd love to just hear from you. Are there like, if if you are going to a candidate forum and you could ask a couple of questions, are there one or two questions you would suggest asking of candidates?
Um, you know, I think depending, this is going to vary state to state, but I think it's important for candidates to explain their understanding of the state funding model for public education. And because vouchers has become so popular across the US, to find out the position on vouchers. Because a a person, a candidate supporting vouchers is effectively saying like, yeah, it's cool, you know? In in my case, we have a very successful school district, but if you're pro voucher, then w- we don't have failing schools, but you're, you're saying that you think money should be taken out of my district, public dollars, and given to unregulated, you know, private schools. So that's a big, that's a big question and red flag. In Ohio, we use levies um, to fund um a public schools and that is, and ob- and obviously it's related to our tax dollars. Our property value, excuse me. So I I think what I see a lot of times from candidates is a lack of understanding. You know, I don't want to levy every X amount of years. I don't want my taxes to be raised, but that is what is happening at the state level. And that is, that is what, that is the hand we have been dealt since, you know, the nineties in Ohio. So if you fail to understand that and are trying to then shift blame elsewhere, um, and sometimes make out problems, and then that shows me you don't understand how school funding works in your particular state. So that, that's the first question I would ask. The second question I would want to know is how, how are you going to work with your team of administrators, your superintendent, your treasurer and so on, to create equitable education opportunities for all students? How are we going to ensure that each kid has what they need to be successful? And I think I'd also really want to know, um, how they can help support administrators or or advocate for resources to be put into mental health, um, and how that works in a public school setting because as you already mentioned, right, the post-COVID uh environment has been very challenging for students. In my district, you know, I've been on the board four years. I've had to answer the phone call, the phone seven times for student deaths.
Oh, my gosh.
Five of those were suicides. Uh, that is not normal. That is absolutely not normal. And so for me, on a personal note, I really want to know how, how candidates are going to support that element within our school and not say, oh, well, no, that's SCL indoctrination CRT. Those are big red flags for me. That that tells me that maybe these people, these candidates might not understand um, really what's going on in public schools and and what's in ultimate, not that, but really what's impacting students today. And frankly, we can't turn our backs on them. So I want people, I want to know that people support that.
Yeah, and I think, Leslie, you just brought up so many points, but one of them that's important is like, does this candidate know what's actually happening in the district? Right? Are they just talking about some national talking points they pulled out of? You know, the whatever is happening, or do they understand what's happening in your district? Um, and also, do they know beyond just their own child's school? Right? Like, sometimes people are running because there's this thing happening at their kid's school that they want to work for or against. There's more than just your kid's school. So understanding that. Well, I know that this group probably has lots of great questions as well, so um, while we are kind of laying out a couple of resources for you all, uh, we also want you all to start chatting in questions. So now that this, everybody who's on this call, you've heard, what is So now that this, everybody who's on this call, you've heard what a school board member does. You've heard about what Leslie is asking of candidates. We love the wisdom of this group. So while I'm kind of closing out with some resources, chat in the questions that you are going to go ask candidates in your district. So chat those in, use the wisdom of this group to jot some down and bring them to your next candidate forum or get in touch with candidates in your district. As you're doing that, as you're reading all of the questions that people are coming up with, in your handout, we've got some resources for you. So there are a bunch of links in here about preparing to vote. So you'll see that there's a link to the candidate guide we created at School Board School for Cincinnati Public Schools candidates. If you're in CPS, that's great, use it. But if you're not, we included it. So you could see what questions we thought were important to hear from candidates about. So you can take those for your district. There's also links to vote411.org. It's a great place to go to find out who are the candidates running in my district. Right? Like, sometimes you don't even know who they are. So if you go to vote411.org and put in your information, you can get that. There's a resource from the Legal Women Voters that they created that's like everything you need to do to go prepare to vote for school board. And then we also included a link to our Election Action page where people from all over the country can come find lots of great information. So speaking of election action, we all know now how important school board members are. But you probably also know that historically, school board elections have really low voter turnout. We need you all to help change that. So we've got some ways you can do that. If you're in greater Cincinnati, we are actually running a school board election awareness campaign. So you can volunteer with us. If you're not here in Cincinnati, what we'd suggest is that you look up the candidates who are running in your district and then volunteer on one of their campaigns. Leslie and I can tell you, it is a whole lot of work to run for school board. We need your help. So go volunteer on a campaign. Also, spread the word to your network. So use social media and link to reputable sites like Vote411, right? That spread information. Talk at your book club, talk at your neighborhood council, wherever you can. Say, there's an election, we need you all to go vote. And then spread the word beyond your network. So, you know, we just had some of the members of School Board School get an op-ed published about why it's important to vote, no matter where, where you live. So it's somebody from a suburban district and someone from an urban district who co-authored it. And Annie is chatting in a link to that now. So if you want to read that op-ed and use it as kind of inspiration to write your own, most of our newspapers are looking for really high-quality op-eds. So get out there and make sure people know there's a school board election and they should vote. And then finally, bring some friends with you to the polls. So when you go to vote, text like a half dozen of your friends and tell them, there's a school board election. Here's who's running. Do you need a ride to the polls with me right now to go find out or to go vote for school board? So I know we've only got like four minutes left. So I'm going to turn it back over to Maya and she's going to share a couple more resources and wrap us up.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, so I'm going to share a few resources to share. But before we do, we're going to pull up with the same objectives that we started with. So we can see how much we've learned and how we're feeling now. So go ahead and answer those three questions. And as you guys are answering, I'm going to share that we have a page of resources on our website called Advocacy Tools. And we think it'll be really helpful for you year round, not just during election season. The link is on your handout and we'll chat it in. Okay, it looks like we have some agrees and strongly agrees coming up. Love to see it on the first question. And the second, beautiful. Thank you, guys. As we close out, I want to say a big thank you to Leslie and Lisa for sharing their time and expertise with us tonight. Thank you to all of you for joining us. If you want to learn more about School Board School and other sessions like this that we hold, you can sign up on our website or chat in the link. Or you can follow us on any of the social media that you see on the screen. Don't forget to stick around for the after-party. So you can hear from Susan and Jay and go beyond to talk with you. And you can ask your questions.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Again, your time is so incredibly precious. It means so much that more than 100 people from across the country were here learning and actively participating. I dropped a link in the chat for feedback. I'm just going to do it again because, you know, there's a lot of links and that's a good thing. It says, "Feedback please," and then a link to a little form. And I know that some people weren't here for the whole thing. We're going to send out a recording and compile all these resources and we will get them all to you. It might not be until tomorrow afternoon. So I thank you in advance for your patience. And if you have questions that were not answered, either for Leslie or Lisa or anybody else, but also for Jay, who is, I think of as sort of like the bridge. So, okay, we just spent a lot of time talking about what does a school board do? What do they not do? How can we best approach them? And Jay has a ton of experience in just that. So as you're all thinking of your questions and who you want to ask them to, I'm actually going to pass the mic to Jay so you can share a little bit more about yourself.
Hi, thank you. Hello, everybody. Yes, I am Jontay Marshall, co-founder of 1865 No Racism in Schools. You heard my bio a little earlier if you joined in. But I just want to make myself available. I started as a parent and decided, you know what? It's time to take my pain and turn it into purpose. And we started with a campaign, a anti-racism campaign, which resulted in the passing of the anti-racism policy in Nevada, all of Nevada, which is the fifth largest district in the nation. And then also an Assembly Bill, Anti-Discrimination in Education Assembly Bill, which actually passed before the policy. So anything that I can, any questions I can answer, I would like to make myself available at this time. Thank you.
And as questions are coming in, if I can just start off and ask, I guess like, there are probably some people on this call who have never attended a school board meeting, who have never maybe considered it up until recently. And I don't know, for me, it can be a little bit intimidating. You know, I live in Chicago, so it's a pretty big district. It feels like it's probably very official. Do you have any tips or advice for people who are just starting to think about getting more involved?
Yes, I do, actually. So the first thing is make sure that you have followed the, the steps for contact. Make sure that you've attempted to meet with the principal, the regional superintendent. You've sent letters to all of the different admin who can actually influence that immediate change and outcome of whatever the challenge is. And then find out how long public comment is and where you have to submit in order to speak. Because people think, oh, I'm just going to go down here and talk. The whole meeting has an agenda. It's pre-approved before the date of the meeting. And you have to make sure that you get your name on a list or however it works in your respective state. Once you go down, if they say it's two minutes, make sure that, that yours kind of speech and your ask is pre-written so that it can fit within that amount of time that's allocated and you're not cut off. And always, always, always end with the ask.
That's super good advice. I've also heard people say, maybe you said this and I'm sorry if I missed it, but a pro tip is to thank people for their service on the school board when you speak. Because you know what? Even if you are frustrated, they are putting in a lot of time. Everybody really likes being thanked. So I am seeing some questions in here for anybody. Somebody's asking if they can join a school board if they have left the district.
Nope, you can only run in the district where you live. And I'll also just jump into Susan and say, we have a whole training on how to speak effectively at a school board meeting. And it includes exactly what both Susan and Jay are saying. You start by thanking them and making your connection to the district. And you end with a specific ask. If you just say in general, something's bad, they're like, yeah, there's a lot that's we're trying to work on in our district. But if you say, here's my concern and here's the specific thing I'm asking you to do about it, that's something that they might be able to act on. And so we do have on our website a recording of a session like this. On, yeah, and like, how do you speak effectively at a school board meeting? So definitely check that out.
I love that. And in the feedback form that I dropped in here, that I'll also email tomorrow, it says like, what else do you want? What other sessions would you like? So if that's something people are interested in, great. I see another question that says, what can you do when they hold the school funds from Dorothy? I mean, if you need more clarification, you can ask for that. You're not, I'm not 100% sure what that question means.
Yes, I would need more clarification when who holds the school funds? And what school funds are you referring to? Because the budgets are pretty much set in advance. And then everything allocates. And I'm just being very high level in general right now because I don't want to overwhelm people. But those budgets are set. And then there are allocations that happen. Every state may be different. In the state of Nevada, the principals are responsible for creating their budgets and their, the facilitation of those dollars and allocation, allocation of those dollars in their set schools. But there's a separate, larger budget over the district that the superintendent and all those individuals play a part in creating. So you got to figure out how the budget allocations are handled in your state. We also, just as a tip, identify if your school has a SOT. So if there is a group that is created to be able to look at how funding and programming and allocations and things like that are happening. And then if there is a complaint, you want to make sure, again, that you go to your child's school or you go to the regional superintendent. You can go to the superintendent. Because anything that's operational falls under the superintendent and the cabinet. Anything that is policy-driven, as we learned today, is the trustees. So the trustees really can't do anything about, they, they sent a check to the wrong place.
Yes, and I think like Leslie said there to that question of like, what about the funds? Is like, know when your budget hearings are and show up, right? I think that's really important. And then I think like Jay's saying, each district's probably different, but there's probably some committee that is specifically working on the budget. And so I know like in Cincinnati Public Schools, we have a budget committee or a finance committee. We also have an audit committee. All of these are public meetings and so they have to be noticed. So if you start to, you know, figure out what is, what, what's the structure of my district? Where is this budget being talked about? Go to those meetings. And that even oftentimes in those smaller meetings, it's an easier place to get your voice heard.
Yes, and someone asked, what's the SOT? So SOT is the School Organizational Team. Their primary focus is to look at budget and programming. And that team is made up of individuals from the community as well as individuals that work within the school site. Though it may not be called that, but there usually is a group that's inclusive of community members to kind of review those things.
Yep, and I think there was a question about what do you do if they're not doing their job when it comes to curriculum that got chatted in. And Leslie, I know you probably have a mouthful to say about that too. But I think that goes back to also what we were talking about earlier is like, you've got to start showing up. And so I know one of the things that we talk about a lot in terms of advocating at the school board level is this piece about not just showing up once. I know it's really hard because you're all very busy. But you know, I bet every school board member can give you examples of somebody who came once and you were like, oh, that was a compelling speaker, right? But like, you're like this as a school board member. All the balls in the air. Let me keep all my balls in the air. Oh, and then a fire. So now there's a fire coming at me and I'm keeping balls in the air, right? And so if you want your concerned herd coming that once and speaking at the mic about it is great, but it's those people who come back again and then come back again. So like, we had somebody who, we had this facilities master plan in Cincinnati where every school was either renovated or rebuilt. And then a couple of other newer schools started later and their buildings, just like, they were in kind of older school buildings, et cetera. And she came in with a concern about some of the facilities. And like, our answer was blah, quite frankly. It was like, well, it wasn't part of the facilities master plan. She came back the next time with three more parents. And so four people in a row spoke on that topic. She came back the next meeting with a bunch of students. And the students talked about their experience of sitting on these old carpets and how nasty it was, right? And long story short, somehow the facilities team found the money to do the renovations that were needed in that building. And so I am saying the same thing goes with curriculum. If they're not doing their job and you show up, you know, we often say like, all of you show up in the same color shirt. So, you know, maybe you're all here in green t-shirts. The first person who speaks says, there are 12 of us here tonight, all wearing green shirts who share this concern about our curriculum. I'm going to ask them to stand up. They stand up behind you in the audience while you give your speech, right? And then you have two other people lined up to also talk about the curriculum. You come back the next time. And then I think the other thing too, that I know is in Leslie's expertise as well, is like, get the press involved. So get your local press and say like, I need you covering school board meetings. Our school board is not doing their job when it comes to curriculum. Can, we're all going to be here, we're going to have a bunch of people who are going to show up. Can you report on this? I mean, sometimes that's what it takes is getting local news coverage to start covering things because they don't want to be that headline.
If I could just add, you know, you're really touching on organizing, right? Community organizing, rallying your friends and neighbors to come up. And, you know, I, I'm generally with those people. But on the board where I am, I am outnumbered significantly. And with a board that doesn't really want to listen to those different opinions or voices, regardless of the fact that they are our constituents. And one thing that has gotten through or at least made some impact is having people bring others as well. We have regulars that come and they speak and they are, you know, very respectful and kind. But in they, but they are firm in sharing their disappointment in certain things that have happened in our district regularly. And they bring other people. And that, it, it really does force, that organization forces the district to at least at minimum hear the concern. And maybe the board might not want to act, but those administrators that are having to deal with these things on the daily, you know, on the daily might figure out ways to, to work around some of those concerns and to address those concerns while also balancing the board, you know, their personal feelings and that sort of thing. So it's super important. And, you know, I've been, I've been accused of controlling the media in Cincinnati. I did not know I was that powerful. But you, again, you touched on that. That really, really can apply pressure when people are not doing their jobs and enforce their hand, frankly. And, you know, it's unfortunate that it has to happen that way sometimes. But those are two really important things to get attention and hopefully change.
That's really helpful. If your question, if you put a question in and it didn't get answered, please put it in again. It was not intentional. And if you are thinking of a question that you have or you have started to do some organizing, you've had an experience with your local school board and you just kind of want to check in about your next steps, it's actually, I think, pretty special that we have such experts. So please, like, drop in any questions or comments that you have. I love that. Do you see that, Jay?
Yes, it's okay to answer that.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, so thank you, Ms. Brittany Thomas. I appreciate your question of how I transitioned from a mom to a leader. So initially what happened is I was in mommy mode because we found out that Instagram allowed these school threats of a school, these threats of a school shooting targeting all the black students in the high school on Instagram in the morning, right? And all I could think of was, what about all the kids whose parents didn't see this at 5:00 AM? So being a mom, my first reaction was to just get as many kids not to go to school that day. And then from there, what we did is we started just as angry mothers, right? And so I will be honest, I was the bomb that went down to the school board and was screaming and yelling. But because I didn't know the process and I didn't have a platform like this to explain it. Um, short version is after I realized that they weren't going to take us seriously, right? I, along with the other eight boys moms who were targeted in the crime, hate crime. Got together and we began to organize. We began to coalition build. We said, we're not dealing with anything other than what is the current protocol for dealing with racially motivated incidents? We tackled one piece at a time. What's the protocol? We found out there wasn't one. It was being handled under bullying. Well, bullying and racially motivated incidents are two different things. And so as we coalition build and as we organize and we set the campaign out. And we began to, uh, build relationships with our friends that practice responsible journalism in the media. And we reached across the state line to national organizations as well to say, hey, do you have a representative in our state? Because contrary to popular belief, when we all show up in a red, no racism in schools, eighteen sixty-five shirt, they listen differently. They hear you differently. And when they start seeing names of unions and different things like that, want, you know, showing up. It changes the way that they respond. So once we got done. Once we got done, um, at the school board meetings and we went consistently for five, six, seven months. Every single, every other week we showed up, we put in phone calls, we had children. The best thing you could do is to make sure that the impacted students are heard and that there's a safe space for them. We ran online campaigns. So there's a gambit of things that you can do. And making sure that your school board official that's in your area is aware of what you're doing. And either they're going to be an ally or they're not, and you need to know where they stand. Not being afraid to reach out to the individuals that sit on the education committee for your legislature. That's the important part. That's how we got policy through because we had an assembly woman carry the bill, which is how it passed. Which then forced the district when they didn't want to put a anti-racism policy in place to do it anyway. So that's just high level.
Jay, that's amazing. And I, um, I, I am going to, I'm not going to try to follow Jay, but I am going to say that, uh, if you are a mom, you're already a leader. Right? Um, and also moms get, I was going to swear, so I'm not going to Susan. This is your, um, moms get stuff done is what I'll say instead of what was about to come out of my mouth. Period. Moms, as, as parents, moms, dads, you all get stuff done in your families, right? Um, whoever, yes. And, um, I think there are so many skills that are applicable to, um, to this work, right? Like, I don't, I have, I have twins. They, they, they were born and experienced life at the exact same time, yet they are the two most different human beings you will ever see on this planet. So even just being able to figure out, how do I communicate? Let's get out the door in ways that will get two very different people aligned on this goal of getting out the door. That is stuff you're doing every day. And so I just don't want anyone to discount the fact that they have so many skills that are leadership skills by being a parent. Uh, so that is what I was going to say for that one. I can go on to a technical question here, but I was like, Jay, yes, I want, yes. Um, there was a technical question of like, can you school boards support ordinances that your city is doing? So one way that you can do that, um, and I'll say what we do, um, our, our board has done many times, uh, recently, and it's the state level, but same thing would go to any other governing body, is they can pass resolutions. It's a powerful way to make a statement as a board. So we've had so much stuff happening at the state level here in Ohio that goes against the values of our school district. And so our school board will write and pass resolutions against things like. Our state school board decided to rescind their own anti-racism policy. So I guess if you're anti, anti-racism, I don't know what that means. Anyway, but right. So again, so our school board submitted a resolution against that, for example. So they will submit resolutions. And so that's one way that your school board can kind of talk to another governing body.
Um, I also see a question here, um, which is how can I find out if a person is a Democrat or Republican? I think what they're talking about is back that a lot of school board, not all, but most school boards, it's a nonpartisan position. So if one of you could speak to that.
Um, I ran as an independent in twenty nineteen. Um, because I, we had really at that point only seen one set of Republican candidates get an endorsement. And at that point, no, no one else had, and there were definitely people on the board that identified as Republican, but still ran independent. So I, at that juncture, I felt like I just, I'm going to run independent, you know? And I had support from people that shared my values. Um, nowadays, we, in our area, we are seeing endorsements more frequently. Um, but at least I, I guess to, to speak to the democratic side. Um, it's mostly been because we get access to help. So they're not giving money necessarily to our candidates, but they are giving us, um, access to things like vendors, isn't the right word. But you know, they, they help with, um, that give discounted rates for printing literature and things like that. Um, access to a program that helps us target who we want to, you know, canvas or knock doors and that sort of thing. Um, so, but it's, it's also used in bad ways too, I think. Where, where you're seeing like the, the national agenda is this, and it's going to carry on down. And you can easily identify that by the letter behind their name. Um, and everything I say, I'm sure anyone could look up, you know, could figure out how I lean. Um, and, and it might appear biased, but that is just what has happened in, in our area. And, and I would go so far as to say nationally as well. And I, you know, I got a research fellowship to study all of this through my employer. Um, and my research certainly supports that, what I've gathered. Um, and so it is important to know if they're endorsed, how they're, you know, but ultimately what their values are. Um, are they pro-public education? Are they pro-all students? I mean, those are, those are the big ones, I think. So, um, I, I do think more and more, yeah, we're seeing endorsements across the board. For a number of different reasons. I don't think it's necessarily the number one reason to, to write someone off. Um, but, um, it, you know, it is worth noting for sure.
Yeah. And, and just on like a, um, there's pros and cons to everything. I think generally it is, um, it's, it's not a bad thing if our school board races are not, you know, a trickle down of all of the national partisan politics. Because people who belong to various political parties can share, uh, appreciation for public education and want to support all students. It does mean, as I was mentioned before, um, school board elections can be low voter turnout elections. And one of those reasons is that if you're a person who typically votes straight ticket and you get down to school board, all of a sudden you realize, oh, I forgot to do my research to realize who I should vote for, like who, who is aligned with my values on this. So, um, those of us on this call can be organizers in that way to do that research. To get that information out to people in your network, um, to get it out to people, uh, maybe via social media, maybe via text. Um, and you can do a real great service.
Yes.
Your community.
I would say, Susan, that's exactly right. That, um, I think unfortunately we make a lot of assumptions now, like Leslie said, if there's a D or an R behind someone's name. That may not actually encompass what that person thinks or believes. And so that makes it more challenging, but, um, you know, I think it is incumbent on us to actually research each candidate. So I can even say like, you know, I am a registered Democrat, but I wasn't endorsed by the Democratic Party. And that comes down to a lot of internal politics, behind the scenes stuff, right? Um, and also there's often more people of a certain party running than there are seats. And so your local party has to make some choices, right? And so like just having that letter by your name doesn't necessarily tell you everything about the other candidates who don't have that. It might just be that they didn't end up getting endorsed for some reason. And so while it's more work for you all, it is really important to read candidate guides, to go to candidate forums, to ask candidate questions. So that like Leslie was talking about during the, kind of the other portion of this, when you're thinking about who am I going to vote for? You know what their values are. You know what they've already been saying they're going to do in office. Um, I'll say just like really quickly, we're running this school board election awareness campaign in Cincinnati. Because there are three reasons people don't vote for, three main reasons people don't vote for school board. They don't even know there's an election, right? Like there's often so many other kind of noisy things happening, issues or city council or mayor race that they don't even know there's an election. The second reason is people don't know why it's important for them to vote. I can't tell you all how many doors I knocked on where people would be like, oh, that's great. You're running for school board. I don't have kids in CPS, so I don't vote for school board. You'd be like, ah, right? But like, that's what a lot of people think. So I think as you all are out there trying to get people to go vote, you might hear that. So being able to explain why it's important to all of us about who's in these roles. And then the third reason is that people will be standing in the voting booth and not vote because they don't know anything about the candidates. So as you all are talking, like Susan said, as you're talking to people in your community to get them to go vote. Sending them links to like nonpartisan voting guides. Like oftentimes, you know, the legal women voters in your community will put one of those out. So organizations like that, get that information out so people can read it and make some choices before they head to the polls.
There are some questions about Moms for Liberty. Okay, I see you.
I got it. Okay. So first of all, I want to, um, address the person in the chat who has a grandchild that is, um, suicidal and dealing with mental illness. I did, um, indicate that school-based mental health programming is federal. And so it's very important that you place everything in writing, but more, most importantly, I want to provide you with a resource, which is nine eight eight. That is the quickest way to get help. You just dial nine eight eight from your phone if, um, a child is having any type of mental health crisis. And I think that it would be good for everyone in your family to have that and to seek professional help, um, in the event that you need that. That's most importantly. In reference to, um, in reference to Moms for Liberty, um, Moms for Liberty is making their rounds because this is a nonpartisan space. I'm definitely not going to, um, uh, go too in depth with that. But what I will say is any initiatives such as book banning or, uh, undoing curriculum. Because it's supposedly tied to CRT from any group, right? Um, is going to fall on the policy that's in place. And it doesn't matter how much they yell, unless the school board votes to undo the policies that are in place. It's just a bunch of rhetoric. Um, and where we have to center or where we have chosen in our state to center ourselves in, in response to Moms for Liberty. Is again to coalition build. How is that impacting people who look like you, who, who identify the way that you identify? That so we build with other, um, nationalities, origins, race, religions, you know, um, gender. You know, how people identify from a gender and, and sexuality base. And so, um, as we band together, right? We all come together with the same messaging to say, we're not undoing or going backwards. Um, and so I highly recommend that, um, there are partnerships established. If you already have an organization, work within your organization to coalition build. If you don't and you're a parent, volunteer with a organization that is working on these matters. And make sure that those organizations are connected to people in the voting space, voter education and voter turnout. Because what usually happens is when they can't get it through at the school board level, then they try to, um, organize and coalition build to, to influence votes. And remove people who will vote against law changes in the, at the legislative level. And so you have to study your opponent, know what their next moves are, know what they're going to do and know how to organize around it. Um, in terms of back conditions being fixed and giving parents false reports. Every school district has a reporting policy. Again, anything you need to know regarding policy. Go to the school board's website and use the search engine to search what you're looking for. And it should take you to a policy page. And in that policy page, it will tell you everything you need to know about whatever the policy is. Um, and then we can go from there. I'm, I'm trying to keep up everybody else. Uh, people can call, okay.
I think that there's a question, um, from Rachel, who's worried about her grandchild. About, about the school and the school board. So I think in addition to some people putting like mental health resources here, hotlines and warm lines. In regards to feeling like the school is not handling it well, what advice do we have?
So, um, in that case, number one, identify if her child has a, um, IEP or five oh four plan already in place for the document of mental. Um, illness. And then from there, reach out to the individual at the school sites. Um, that is responsible. If there is like a, um, special education, um, liaison, a school counselor would be a great place to start. If you can't get in touch with the principal, reach out to the school counselor. If the school counselor is not available, the next step that you want to do, because you want to start within the school site first. They're the ones that are responsible for getting the immediate help to your grandchild. And then from there, identify who is the cabinet person or chair over that puts over special ed services. Because that individual, you can go down that path. If your school district in the state that you live in has a specialized team to address mental health. And, um, equity inside of the schools, which Nevada does have. You want to find that person on the website, which your counselor should be able to give you that information. And everything needs to go in writing. Do not have a lot of verbal conversations if they're not responsive. You want to make sure that you're sending emails and then from there, if these individuals at the school level are not working. Reach out to your state superintendent at the Department of Education. If you've already gone to the school board meetings, you've already reached out at the school level to admin. You've already reached out to, at a regional level and nobody's responding to you. Send a email to every single board member at the Department of Education at the state level. And someone will get in contact with you. There's also due process. So I would reach out to, um, any type of child advocate, um, organizations in your state. And tell, file a complaint with them and they will have the resources and the next steps to be able to get you the support that you need.
All right. You're, I am incredibly impressed that there are still so many people on the line. If you are here, um, if you're just still hanging out because you want to hear what other people's questions are, awesome. If you have a question, drop it in. Um, let's say maybe we can hang around for about five more minutes. And then I bet people have homework help and bath time. And, you know, I don't know, I only know what happens with toddlers. As soon as people start talking about someone like older than four, I'm like, I have no idea what happened. So thank you to all of you who are helping to make the public schools, uh, strong for my children to attend. All right. I think, yeah, gotta go help with homework. Okay. Okay. And please fill out the, um, feedback form. It means so, so much. I will read every single response. We will get resources out tomorrow. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Jay. Thank you, School Board School. If you have questions, please reach out. Okay. Thank you so much. Bye.